Good evening. I would like to call the February 5th, 2024 Alexandria County Board of Commissioners regular monthly meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here. At this time, I will lead our invocation, and then following our invocation, Boy Scout Troop 275 will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would stand, please.
Heavenly Father, thank you for all the gifts that you give us. Thank you for allowing us to live here in such a beautiful county and such a beautiful area. Dear God, please be with the many folks around that are suffering from the flu or COVID or other illnesses today. Dear God, please be with our country, be with our state, and be with our county, and help us to make good decisions to lead this county forward. God be with our emergency services, fire EMS, and police forces. Please put your hedge of protection around them as they put their lives on the line to protect us each and every day. Be with this meeting, be with everyone as they travel to their homes after we're finished. In thy name we pray, amen.
Hello, I'm Warren Holler. Been around a long time, Ron. Troop 275, we have one girl from Troop 1234. We're working on the citizenship and community merit badge and learning what you guys do and how we think about what we should do in our county to be good citizens. So as part of that, they're attending the meeting to see what you guys are doing. If we have permission, we'll do the scout law and the scout oath. I say a special thank you to our scout leaders back there, Oscar and Olivia Shealy, and also Jason Orling for being here with us tonight. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will self-introduce, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Cooper James. I'm a life scout from Troop 275, and if you'll please, I'll lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Aiden Guthrie. I'm from Troop 275, and I'm a first-class scout. This is a scout.
On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God and my country to obey the scout law, to help other people at all times, keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight.
I'm Le Julian. I will be doing the scout law and... I'm doing it now. Scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent.
Thank you, gentlemen. I would say I was actually a member of Troop 275 for a very short period of time when I was much younger, but I wasn't tough enough to tough it out. So I'm very proud of you guys, and thank you for being here. Moving on with the agenda, item number four, commissioners' reports. Commissioners, does anyone have anything they'd like to say?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple things. Yesterday, I was watching TV, probably some of the others were seeing this same thing. Kyle Truitt from Taylorsville, he was on there, the U.S. Open Pro Bowling Championship, I guess, and he actually won it. So, you know, he took Taylorsville to a place we hadn't been in a while, but, you know, he's a hometown guy, so just wanted to give a shout out for him. And on another note, some of us had talked about a resolution to the insurance commissioner, you know, for that big increase the insurance companies are wanting. I actually called him, he answered his phone. He is totally against it, you know, the same as we are. So he said they'll probably wind up taking him to court. I said, well, if they do that, they got to tell how much profits they've made, you know, during that time. So I told him just to go 5% spread out over five years, you know? So, but that's kind of where we're at on that. He's not interested in giving it to them either. So we could do a resolution, but I think he already knows how we feel about it.
Good deal.
That's all I got, sir.
Any other commissioner? I would just say briefly that I had the opportunity, I've had the opportunity to, I guess, participate in and/or the honor of attending this past month, three new business grand openings in our county. And I know Commissioner Pennell attended one as well, and Commissioner Herman was at one today, or he and I attended one today together. And just to mention a couple of those. There were two new business openings in Bethlehem, one being Forever Pets, which is a pet boarding, pet daycare, and as well as grooming and other, you know, other pet services. Then also Bethlehem was Bunce Buildings. They're right down at the lake, and they are actually a very... They're a pretty big company, and they're based out of Davidson, North Carolina. They have stores, you know, as far, they have stores in Greensboro, upstate South Carolina. And their Bethlehem location, which is in Alexandria County, is actually, they consider that their Hickory location. So hopefully those two businesses will do well. And then today, Commissioner Herman and I were fortunate enough to attend the grand opening at Golden Vine Massage and Wellness here in Taylorsville on School Drive. And this is a young person that is striking out on her own, starting her own business, which is to be applauded. And Mr. Pennell, if you want to mention the other that you attended?
I attended the, right there on Highway 16 in Taylorsville, the ribbon cutting grand opening for the heritage sandwich shop. The Gerber family moved here a few years ago and decided that they would like to establish some more roots into our county, so they decided to open up a sandwich shop.
And obviously, we're very, very happy and glad to see new businesses that provide services for us, as well as hopefully will generate some revenues for the county.
Mr. Lael, I went to the new appliance store. They had a grand opening this past week too, and I did make it. So it's good to get a new appliance store here in the county.
That's right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, hopefully people will support all these places, so they'll stay around.
By local, that's what we say. Moving on, number five, adoption of the agenda. Gentlemen, I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number six, public comment. Mrs. Clerk, we did not have anyone sign up for public comment, so we'll move right on. Number seven, EMS update, or excuse me, EMS 2023 update. I would recognize Jeff Sigmund, EMS Director, Major Kevin Richards, and Shannon Childers, who is our port community paramedic.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I come before you tonight to give a quick recap and overview of 2023 statistics for EMS. Along with me, Major Kevin Richards will be giving or presenting a new procedure that EMS will be implementing here in the near future. And we've been working on this for probably six to eight months, and we are very excited to be bringing this truly lifesaving procedure to the citizens of Alexandria County. And last, Shannon Childers will be our port community paramedic coordinator. Will be given an update on his position and future plans. So 2023 was a pretty busy year for EMS. I split these next few slides up to show comparison of previous year of 2022. In 2023, EMS responded to 8,206 calls for service, which is an increase from 2022, where we responded to 7,572 calls. This is an increase of 634 calls in 2023. As you can see, Station 1, which is our main station on Highway 90, is the busiest, running 5,280 calls. And Station 2, located in Bethlehem, is next with 1,689 calls. And Station 3, which is located 16 north, ran 1,165. Our Station 1 increased by 411 calls, which we have three EMS crews working out of that station. Station 2 had an increase of 224 calls with only one EMS crew working there. And with the growth and everything that we're seeing in the southwest part of the, you know, the county, we only see it, you know, increasing in volume. Also, Alexander Rescue and EMS, that is our backup EMS service for the county, they were put on standby 22 times in 2023, and out of that 22 times, they handled eight calls for us, as far as EMS calls. And also, we had our surrounding counties on standby four times when all of our services was tied up. So this slide here shows EMS calls by fire districts, just to break it down a little bit. And here again is a comparison of 2022 and 2023, which you see a pretty much an increase across the board, except for one or two districts where they basically stayed the same. And I'd like to publicly thank each and every one of our emergency services agencies from the Alexander Rescue Squad, each and every one of our fire departments, our Fire Marshal's Office, Emergency Management, our 911 Communications, our Sheriff's Office, PD, and even the Highway Patrol for always assisting our crews when needed. We truly appreciate their help. So one of EMS's biggest obstacles is the total time an ambulance is tied up on a call. And this is due to all of our transports being to surrounding county hospitals. And our average time from dispatch, from a time from an ambulance being dispatched to being back in service for another call, last year was 56 minutes and 11 seconds. And as you can see, the red dotted line, that is the national average, you know, as far as turnaround time for EMS call, which is roughly around 30 minutes. And which our times has really improved, you know, in the past couple of years. During the COVID height, our average call time with all the ER overcrowding and everything was 75 minutes. So we've increased or did a lot better, you know, as far as on our time. And our hospitals, they work very well with us trying to get our ambulance service and everything turned around to get us back in service. So this graph here is the average emergency response time. This is from the time an EMS unit is dispatched to being on scene to an emergency call. And last year in 2023, our average time was seven minutes and nine seconds. The national average is eight minutes, and EMS has always strived to, you know, be at or below the eight-minute mark, which, you know, out in the more rural parts of the county, you know, takes a little bit longer. And our longest emergency response was 12 minutes and 22 seconds. And this was due to multiple calls at one time that we had to handle. So each EMS call that 911 receives, they put it in a nature code. And our top five calls for 2023, falls comes in at number one, sick person calls comes in at number two, breathing problem is number three, and traffic accidents is number four, and unconscious calls rounds out the top five. So just a quick layout on how EMS operates. EMS has four shifts, working 24 hours on, 72 off, scheduled with 12 medics per shift. We currently have three full-time openings. Our EMS office employs three, and which the normal work hours is eight to five, Monday through Friday, which includes our administrative assistant, our port community paramedic, and myself, for a total of 51 full-time positions. And also, we employ 25 right now, part-time positions. Both full and part-time consist of nine basic EMTs, one advanced EMT, and we have 65 paramedics, and a number of our paramedics has went on to further their education, as far as National Registry Paramedic, Critical Care Paramedic, and we've got several of them that's went on and got their tactical paramedic. We have five ambulances positioned across the county that works 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and two quick-response vehicles. We have three paramedic-level ambulances and one quick-response vehicle at our main station on Highway 90. One paramedic-level ambulance in the QRV in Bethlehem, and one paramedic-level ambulance 16 north at the old Sugarloaf Fire Department. And availability and location of ambulances play a crucial role in reducing response times, which in turn saves lives. So just a little on training. EMS maintains a high quality of training every year. All these topics in front of you is what our employees have trained on in 2023, either during quarterly end services or on-shift training. Last year, our employees had a combined total of 2,220 hours of training. This is just a small picture of what our scope of practice is. However, our scope of practice is a whole lot more. And the easiest way I can explain this, just imagine from birth to old age, we as technicians have to know how to treat everything pretty much in between. And due to our extended response times as far as to the hospitals, we are very aggressive in our state protocols and our treatment procedures. And in closing, I would like to thank each of our EMS employees for their dedication, hard work, and exceptional care that they continue to provide to Alexandria County. And also, I'd like to thank you, the board, for always supporting EMS and emergency services as a whole. And at this time, I'll be glad to answer any questions, and if not, I'll turn it over to Major Kevin Richards.
Jeff, I'd like to say that response time and getting back into services, I mean, that's very quick, considering that you have to go where you have to go.
Right.
And, I mean, any way you cut it, if it's a busy day on 16, and you're just running routine, it's going to take you 30 minutes to get to Catawba.
Oh, yeah. Our average, from the scene to the hospital, our average time was like 24 minutes something, just to get to the hospital.
And the other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, for our citizens out there, you know, your response time to getting to the scene or getting to the person that needs a medical care at that time, that's very quick, even though if you're standing there, you're way to go the ambulance. It seems like it's three and a half days.
Seems like forever.
And you're like, where are they at? Why aren't they here? And that's because your adrenaline is rushing, not yours, but the person that's waiting on that ambulance, their adrenaline is rushing, and they're like, where are you at? And they're excited, they want you there, they want to get something done right away. But it's nice to know that you can put that information out there so our citizens will understand, you are responding, and that's a very quick time for our county, as isolated as some areas are. So for that, I mean, not just for that, because you guys have done a good job. I could vouch for that about four times, okay? And you can do a good job riding down the road and starting an IV also. I don't remember his name, but he started his IV on me, going down the road. And I'm like, you got to be kidding me, man, you know? But he did. I mean, and the whole point of that is for me just to say the fact that I just wish that the people in our community, in this county, could get the opportunity just to see you guys at work, because y'all are, every one of you are a very professional bunch, and group, not bunch, a very professional group. And with what you all do, I'm extremely proud of our paramedics and the people. I know the last hospital I was at was Catawba. They speak very highly of our personnel over there at that hospital. So thank y'all for the job you're doing. I really appreciate the information you've given out here tonight, because the public needs to know that you are responding quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sigmund, if I remember, and some of you guys would probably remember, it wasn't that long ago, well, I'll say that long ago, it could have been six, eight years ago, but we were not, our response time was, you know, our response time, or your response time wasn't as good as it is now, you know? And we were trying to, and we were trying to get to that eight-minute mark.
Well, what's really helped is our putting the station up 16 north.
And I remember some conversations about, it was really hard, especially going up, you know, going up toward Vashdi and some of those places.
Yeah, northeast, northern.
Our more rural northern locations, you know, and thankfully, you know, thankfully, we've been able to, or the county's been able to, you know, to do some things, and you guys are doing a great job. And, you know, that response time's about a minute under, which, I mean, you know, in a life-or-death, heart-attack kind of situation, a minute's a big deal.
Right.
You know, and so that's, I'm just, you know, personally, I'm very proud of the improvements and where we are, you know, and the job you guys are doing. So thank you.
Jeff, I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Do you find yourself struggling at times with the amount of ambulances you have available?
Yes. Our five ambulances can get taxed so quickly, so quickly. But we've got the two QRVs, one at Station 1, one at Station 2. And during the day, I've got myself and Shannon, you know, that's able to respond. And our QRVs, they have identically the same stuff as our ambulances got, except for, you know, stretcher, as far as not being able to transport. And that's when the squad, you know, comes into play. We'll get them to come out and help us.
Your response times are fantastic, in my opinion. I've noticed that for two years, but it's a, I think it's a shame that we tie an ambulance up for close to an hour.
That is, like I said, that's our biggest obstacle.
And the only, the way around, the only way around that was if we had a emergency room? Or is there another avenue?
No, that would help as far as on our response times. But depending on what kind of hospital we have, we'll be doing a lot of transfers out of there. I know back when we had our hospital, you know, years ago, 2003, we was doing a lot of, I mean, they saved a lot of lives. The hospital has saved a lot of lives. But we did do a lot of transfers out of there, you know, to other hospitals.
I appreciate you guys, you do a great job.
Thanks.
So I'm going to try to read this, because I'm used to teaching, and so if I don't read, I'm going to get off topic, and we'll be here three hours. So I'm going to try to stay focused here on what I've got to cover. But, Mr. Chairman, Alexandria County EMS is pleased to announce we are adding whole blood to the treatment formulary. The purpose is to stabilize patients who have suffered significant blood loss. This can be the result of trauma, GI bleed, or pregnancy-related emergency. This project began nearly two years ago, working through the logistics of obtaining blood from a blood bank into Alexandria County. With Alexandria County located over an hour away from a Level 1 trauma center, our purpose is to provide a blood transfusion in the field to increase survivability. All of our ambulances are stocked with TXA, a medication to promote blood clotting. When the first arriving ambulance arrives to the scene, paramedics can administer TXA until the QRV arrives to begin a blood transfusion. Before this endeavor took place, all paramedics could do was give normal saline by IV. Normal saline will provide volume to a loss of blood. However, it does not provide oxygen-carrying capabilities to the dying cells and organs. Previously, paramedics would seek trauma patient's blood become thinner and thinner until death occurred. With the capability of blood along with TXA for clotting, we expect to increase survivability rates. Looking at the red dots on this map shows the locations of a Level 1 trauma center in North Carolina. Level 1 trauma centers provide immediate definitive care to people with severe injuries. The lower level focuses on evaluating, stabilizing the person so that if necessary, the staff can transfer them to a higher-level facility. So how did we accomplish our goals? The development of whole-blood protocol came of careful consideration with the logistical challenges we face as a service. Attempts were made to work with our local hospitals on this endeavor. Unfortunately, general hospitals, such as the ones that surround us, cannot provide whole blood for the field use as they are limited on how much they have on hand. Even with the helicopters that enter our county, not all of them carry blood. We needed a blood bank, and without an N-County hospital, we did not have one. So to overcome this challenge, a partnership with H.R.M. Health Wake Forest Baptist Hospital has been formed. Working with the blood bank at Baptist, the blood will be shipped from Baptist to Wilkes Medical Center Blood Bank. We will drive to Wilkes Medical Center to receive two units of blood and return every 14 days or five days prior to the expiration of blood for a new shipment. Baptist Blood Bank will provide two units of low-titer Group O whole blood, either O-positive or O-negative. During times of whole-blood shortages, whole blood may be substituted with two Group O-packed red blood cells and two Group A plasmas. Trauma is the leading cause of death for patients under 46 years of age, and uncontrolled hemorrhage remains the number-one cause of preventable death. Whole blood is ideal for pre-hospital use, as it is superior to a crystalloid such as normal saline. Alexandria County will be administering the same type of blood or blood type you would be receiving in a trauma center. The U.S. military has been transfusing whole blood with great success for several years. Next priority was to locate a mini bio-fridge to allow us to carry the blood longer and to minimize the trips to a 14-day or a five-day prior expiration date. Once located, Alexandria County EMS delivered the refrigerator to Baptist Hospital for certification testing. With this quick-response vehicle, we installed an inverter, the mini bio-fridge, Traceable Live, which provides continuous temperature monitoring, sending data to the blood bank at Baptist Hospital, shift supervisor, EMS Director, and train officer. The inside temperature must be maintained between 1 and 6 degrees Celsius. We will utilize the Quinn Flow Warrior Blood Warmer for blood transfusions. Please note, the QRV must remain running to power an inverter unless the QRV is plugged into a power outlet. In the event of mass casualty scenario, H.R.M. Health Wake Forest Baptist can send additional personnel and up to 20 units of red cells or whole blood to the scene. This large box will be packed on wet eyes with Group O-negative, Group O-positive whole blood, or Group O-negative or Group O-positive packed red blood cells. This may be brought by helicopter or cruise train from H.R.M. Health Wake Forest Baptist Blood Bank on handling pre-hospital blood in the field. Blood not administered in Alexandria County will be returned back to the blood bank before expiration to be utilized at the trauma center. However, with blood being such a valuable commodity, we plan- commodity, we plan on to hold blood drives in the future. We would like to give back more than we carry yearly. We have spoken of blood drives with the Rescue Squad and the local fire departments. Both agencies are, are excited and looking forward to blood drives. When a blood drive occurs, I would like to encourage anyone who is willing to donate blood, please participate. As the very blood you donate very well could come right back into Alexander County. In closing, Alexander County will be one of the very few counties in North Carolina carrying blood. We, as a service, would like to thank you for all you do to advance and support the EMS profession in Alexander County. I would like to also thank James Colwell from the North Carolina Office of EMS, State Medical Director Dr. Tripp Winslow, Local Medical Director Dr. Joel Emmon, George Kontos, and Christina Warren from the Blood Bank at Baptist Hospital, and all the paramedics of Alexander County who have trained tirelessly. May this mission of whole-blood administered in the field give someone a fighting chance. Any questions?
Very good.
Thank you, sir.
That's great.
It's good news. We've been, we've been wanting this for a long time. So our goal is as our service continues to grow and we're able to get more trucks in the field, our end goal is to stabilize that patient in the field and do a direct transfer to Baptist or to Charlotte. Um, as it stands now, we can trans, uh, we can do a blood transfusion and get them on a helicopter if the weather is, is good. But we also have to look over the, over the rest of the citizens in Alexander County as well. So it's, it's challenging sending trucks so far out of, out to outlining trauma centers, but that's the end goal. That's where we need to get these patients. Because at the local level, uh, they do their best to try to stabilize them. But in return, they're having to call another EMS agency to put that patient in the back of the truck and send them on to the Level One Trauma Center. Um, and with time is your worst enemy when it comes to trauma. So we're trying to get them stabilized as best as we can to get them on down to a Level One Trauma Center. All right. And I will turn the floor over to Shannon.
Well, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to be able to stand before you and talk to you about the current state of our new port post-overdose response team and community paramedic program here in Alexander County. In the next few minutes, we will discuss a few things. We will discuss the past and present numbers that we are currently facing, the port process, and our referral sources, recovery roadmap that we have created specifically for our county, support strategy, and lastly, we'll finish up with our 2024 outlook and plans for the future. The numbers we pulled that did come from our ESO, this is our database that we currently use in EMS, and it is used that through our call volume, the call volume that we use, we use that information to put into ESO, and this information was pulled from there, as well as our local sheriff's office and our city police. In 2021, we had over eighty-eight overdoses and two deaths. In 2022, this increased to ninety-four overdoses and two deaths. And if you recall, in early 2023, when we sat before you, Jeffrey sat here, we talked to you and we shared with you that, that what looked like for the future is that we would have anywhere between one hundred to a hundred and twenty overdoses. As you can see, that number was increased unfortunately to one hundred and fifty-two overdoses with fourteen deaths. Further statistics show that we used Narcan sixty-seven times. This is with a success rate of ninety-three percent of recovery in the field. An average age of a person who overdosed was the age of thirty-eight years old. Sixty-eight percent of them were male, while thirty-two percent were female. When we did a further investigation through our interviews and our intake interviews, through the process of our ESO charts, we discovered a staggering number of different substances that were used in the field. Three, the top three were unknown pills at twenty-nine percent. Now, how I explain this is, is there was really no way for us to identify what medication or substance that the patient used in the field that caused their overdose in the first place. Another staggering number is that fentanyl did increase over the past couple of years, and is currently number two at twelve percent. And unknown opioids is at nine percent. Both, of course, are very deadly and something that we are continuing to battle each and every day in our lovely county. As we look at the port process and referral sources, the port, the port process of connecting with these individuals with substance use disorders is that if a patient experiences an overdose within the timeframe of Monday through Friday, eight to five, we will go out to the residence and meet with the individual face-to-face. We will discuss the current substance use and encourage them to get connected with support in overcoming their addiction. If the patient experiences an overdose after these hours, then the port team has seventy-two hours to respond to the patient and begin the process of meeting with the patient about substance use and encourage them to get connected with some sort of support to help them overcome their addiction. Our port team currently is being referred to the patient by the responding or the connected services and organizations for follow-up. EMS, which is when they go out on the call for an overdose, they meet with that individual, they let that individual know that they will be, have someone come to their home in the next few days to follow up with their current situation and talk to them about getting help and support. This has been an overwhelming success. We have not had anybody turn us down. We've come to the homes, they've accepted us, they appreciate us coming out. Unfortunately, not everybody has accepted our support. When that does take place, we do, we do leave behind some harm reduction materials such as Xylazine strips, which is a new drug that is coming into our city, that is a horse tranquilizer that's being used that Narcan does not even touch. And so we want them to be able to test their drugs if they choose to use, to make sure that they do not die. And of course, fentanyl test strips, that will allow them to test to see if their drugs have been laced with fentanyl. We also leave them behind a, their very own Narcan, uh, so that they can be able to use, or family member can use on them if they do decide to use. DSS has also referred a few people to our program. These are individuals who have been through the DSS program, uh, for whatever reason, due to some sort of substance use. And we do go out to their homes, meet with them, and try to get them into all the programs that they are needing to get into based on the DSS guidelines. The sheriff's office has been very gracious and patient with us and allowed us to come into the jail. I'm very thankful for Chad, Captain Mike Lunsford, excuse me, Sheriff Pendle, Captain Mike Lunsford, and Anita Price in pre-trial. They have been absolutely wonderful in allowing us to come and meet with individuals where we have been successful in getting them into rehab programs outside of our city. And then, of course, Alexander County Health Department, and then there's other resources such as the high school, the Alexander County School System, hospitals, and our doctors' offices that have also referred us to, to others. As the port follow-up process begins, as the referral takes place, we do make contact with that patient. We do an intake interview. This can take anywhere between thirty-five to forty-five minutes, and it's mainly us trying to listen to their story. Because one thing that we always share is everybody has a story, and every story matters. And so we want to find out, we want to get to the bottom of their addiction and try to help them walk through that process of getting to recovery, which leads us to our very own personal recovery roadmap. The first step that we want every individual do that and has a substance problem or has had an overdose is to, first of all, recognize that they have a substance abuse problem. If they do not recognize that they have a substance abuse problem, then there's nothing that we can do from that point on. All, all we do, do is that we follow up with them regularly. We ask them if it's okay for us to call, come out and visit, and make sure that they're not needing any other resources to help in their process of trying to get into recovery. The next thing is to educate on the resources that are available. We have been blessed with many resources in and around our community. Places such as ICGH, Cognitive Connections, RHA, VIA have been very helpful in allowing us to get individuals into programs. So we try to educate them on what is available, what is the best-case scenario. Some places are not as good as others based on what they are allowed and able to do. Some programs may be twenty-eight days, while some other programs may be a year. And some of our individuals, our substance users, need more year-long programs than twenty-eight days. And so we just try to make sure that we educate them on what's available. And then, of course, we will connect them with those resources. We will work with VIA and trying to get them in if they do not have insurance, and we try to get them into programs for free. But here lately, we've been actually trying to get them signed up for Medicaid and insurance so that that will allow to curb that cost so that they can get into these programs that are available. Then at that point, we are going to continue to encourage them as they overcome the obstacles that have been preventing their recovery. This has been seen in regards to them recognizing that their friends, their family, their triggers may be in this community. And so we try to help them overcome those triggers by getting them into a situation to where they're able to cope and heal from those so that they do not fall back into the trap of relapse. Next, we encourage them to volunteer their time to support others in their recovery. We don't stop with just trying to get them into recovery. We want them to continue their recovery for life. Because once you're in recovery, you are in recovery for life. And so we want them to volunteer their time by going out into the very world that they had used to live in and try, start encouraging others to make the decision that they made prior. Encourage others to continue the journey, recover from their past, and eventually come to the point where they can yield to the opportunities that now have been laid ahead of them without the substance use causing them to fall. When we look at the support strategy, this is something new that we have initiated this year. Uh, there has been some, um, roadblocks that we have faced with grace and mercy, but we understand that there are roadblocks that are ahead, and we just don't want to stop. But we just want to continue moving forward in this process. So as we continue the support strategy, we will evaluate what does that client and patient need. We will then explore what resources are available for our client. If there are no resources available, then it is our plan to create that resource for them. Somehow, some way, we will create that resource to where we can continue to push them or guide them through, excuse me, in this process of the support. Next, we will educate them by asking the questions of how we can educate this client on the resources that are available. We can also ask, how can we educate the client on the current and most specific needs? This is done through our intake interview where we sit down and we ask specifically, what can we do to help you? What can we do to get you to the point where you're no longer held back by this substance use? What can we do to help you overcome your mental and your health problems that you currently face? Then we will encourage them by asking, what do we encourage the client to continue to move forward? We want them to get into recovery. We don't want anyone to die. We want everyone to live and live a wonderful life. And then we will equip them. We will ask the question, what does the client need to equip themselves to live a better and healthier life? And then lastly, we will evaluate the program each step of the way so that we can do, what, figure out what we can do to improve this strategy. As we look towards 2024, I'm thankful to say that we did obtain our very first peer support. This is an individual who has been in recovery for over ten years. He has been very successful with going with me out in the afternoons after he gets off work, meeting with them in the trenches, meeting with them where they are, and talking just exactly what we talked about in regards to the strategy, trying to figure out what we can do to help them overcome this addiction. I'm also looking at trying to get additional peer supports on, on our, our team so that we can not just have men, but we can have women as well to help us go out in the field and do this exact same thing we're doing. We're looking at doing additional port community paramedic. This will allow us to grow the program even more. In the past, since October, we have had actually ninety-six referrals into our program with one person that's leading, getting, two people, me and my peer support. We recognize the need for an additional port community paramedic, which will allow us not only to continue our efforts, but to allow us to do a transition or a rotation after the eight to five Monday through Friday mark, and allow us to be on rotation every, all night long so that we're making sure that we're meeting these people when the overdose occurs. We are going to continue our education process. As this month has started, we're going to be doing CPR training for the community every Tuesday from ten to twelve. Later on this year, we'll be doing opioid use and Narcan training so that everybody understands and knows how to use Narcan if they are forced to do so. We are also looking at doing our very own AA, NA, and L-Anon groups in our, in our department. And then we are looking, and we are excited to do parenting classes for our community. Because one of the things that we've recognized is that when a patient has been in substance use, one of the things that has fell to the side is their ability to parent and parent well. So we want to make sure that we are helping them in all aspects of their life. And then lastly, one of the bigger things that we're looking at doing this year is a more harm reduction by getting a Narcan vending machine. People do not, really need to understand the value of Narcan and its availability. Because what Narcan does is it does save lives. And as the committee knows, as the commissioners know, as the state knows, and as the funding has told us, the number-one goal for us is to help save lives. And we, we want to do that in any way, shape, or form. So having a Narcan vending machine available, we're looking at having a specific place to put that at this point in time. And later, with the approval through our medical director, we're looking at doing a medication-assisted therapy bridge. This will allow us to give a medication to a person that's in active substance use withdrawal. Some medication that will allow them twenty-four hours to get into a program to where they can get the help that they need without going into a more severe withdrawal than what they're already in. And then, of course, continue to hand out overdose kits for those who refuse our services. Again, I want to thank you so much for allowing me to be here. It has been a very exciting journey so far, and we look forward to the many, many days ahead of helping the individuals of our wonderful community and getting help that they need for this, their substance use. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good program. Glad to see that y'all are working it and doing everything you can to assist. Because, you know, the more I learned about a week ago on Sixty Minutes, they had a program on Sixty Minutes about addiction. And everybody, you know, the doctor was saying that addiction is not something that just happens to you. It's something that whenever you take that drug, that little thing up here in the brain, it keeps telling you, you want more. And, and they also were talking about how they were doing things for people that, uh, they could go in with these electrodes now, and they can actually go in and they can pinpoint the area of the brain where the addiction is that causes you to want that drug really bad. And, uh, I thought it was very interesting because they had one guy on there, it was live or die. I mean, he was right there. And there ain't, I mean, if you continue to stay addicted to this stuff and continue to use it, you're gonna die. It's not a matter if, it's a matter of when. And, uh, but they, they, they had, they had put this in there, and you stay awake while they're doing it. And I thought, I mean, I'm just saying this was interesting because when you stay awake, they do it, and it's, and when he, he didn't want anything after they got it in there and got things done. So the science on this addiction and what's going on is a long way. And I know that some of us turn our nose up to people who are addicted, but the addiction is actually a sickness, and it's something that we got to look after and take care of. And there's a lot, for years, I thought, you know, you people, y'all have had it. All you do is just want to take drugs, you're just doing it for the fun of it and causing yourself problems. But, you know, the more you get into it, the more you learn that it's, it's actually, it's caused by this part up here that's saying, give it to me, give it to me, because I gotta have it, I can't live without it.
Mr. Chairman, you're exactly right. And unfortunately, you know, as science has shown us, and I can't remember what the original number is, but a cup of coffee will increase your dopamine level by a point one to two percent, as in fentanyl will actually increase your dopamine by ten percent, which is recognized as the highest dopamine increase and which causes the mental disorder that addiction has now become. But you're exactly right. Thank you, sir.
It's very interesting. And, and I liked the part on there where you're talking about educating people. You know, I mean, every day of our lives, we're getting educated, whether we like it or not. We're, we're getting educated and learning something each and every day. Uh, and this program, my prayer is it'll help some people. If we can save one person, we've done a tremendous job because it is very, very hard and very difficult. Thank you all for what you're doing. We do appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, moving on with our agenda, we'll move to number eight, which is the strap funding application for stream and, stream debris removal. And I would recognize Pamela Bowman with the Soil and Water Constellation District.
Thank you. Um, take this. Take this off, stay away from everybody, but just wanted to give you an update that we finished our strap round one. So I told Chad I'd try to not talk too much and go through these. Basically let you know, this, like you said, that's the Stream Rehabilitation Assistance Program, so that's a mouthful, but this was our third pot of money that Soil and Water got for stream debris removal. And I didn't put it on here, but I wrote down afterwards, well, we, it is on there that we received $384,805 for this, for the strap round one. But with our EWP, which is Emergency Watership Protection Funds and our State Emergency Funds that we've expended before that, we had roughly $770,000 that we've expended. And I just say that to say, this has been continuing over the last few years, and our tropical storm Etta was where this started out, but we've had debris in our streams for a long time. But like I said, I'll try, I'll, I'll be like Phil before and try to stick to my script and not go too long either. We expended all but $567, so we're actually gonna give back $567, but because what we've completed with this, we've five sites with this $384,000, so I'm sticking to the strap money now. And that was 18,490 linear feet. And when I say debris removal, just for anybody that doesn't know, is trees mainly, but it could be anything else. There's been some pieces of boats, pieces of, not houses necessarily where we were, but buildings and things like that, but mostly trees that are down, that are blocking the stream, that are causing banks to fall in, but also could be a potential to take a road out or take buildings out, things like that. So $335,000 of that was done for the actual debris removal, and that was through Sean Lackey Excavating, and they were the lowest bid and have done a really good job for us. The administration was completed through McGill Associates, and that was $48,000. And that was basically to help with all the application and the reports, which we've got a handle on better now, but we didn't know, you know, what we needed to do, honestly, with all of that to start with. So they really helped out. The Soil and Water Office was able to get reimbursement for some supplies and equipment. This wasn't originally planned, but this was some extra money that was there that McGill didn't need, but we had in case they needed. These were things that were already bought, and it was $887, basically, that we found that we could ask back for reimbursement that went back to the county. So that's what we've done so far. I wanted to show some pictures, and you can see on here what streams these are, before So I always like giving pictures because they're pretty good for, like I say, before and afters. That was showing our debris piles, that's, we did burn the debris, so we had some really big piles, but that's exciting in itself, which we have permits for, and we didn't personally do them, I didn't. I watched, but. And honestly, some of these look bad, but in person, it looks a lot worse, some of the piles that we saw and that they were able to remove. So this is what the contractor ended up doing later on, was digging a hole to burn in, and that was a faster process, but not everybody wanted to do that, and that's understandable, but if they had land where they could do that, it allowed for more controlled burning, and they didn't have to wait as much on weather. All right, so then, obviously, we just want to share that to show, you know, that it's been a success, but actually, we have the opportunity to apply for more funding now. So this is our strap round two request. This is what we're working on now. And this money is state money, I should say, that the legislator has put towards stream debris removal. We have 28 sites left on our list, and that includes a few that were added since the last round. We did not re-advertise this time because we had so many that were not funded still last time, but there were some that came in that we were made aware of, that people called in that we did add. This time, we would like to request $1,123,000, and that's our estimate for all the 28 sites for just stream debris removal. These funds can be used for stream restoration and sediment removal and other things like that, but that is additional cost per each site. So we still feel like if we do stream debris removal only, we'll be able to handle more sites. So at this time, though, Alexander Soil and Water believes that we can handle the administration ourselves. So that will be administration funds, I should have put on here, that will, we will not be using as much of the funds as McGill did, but funds can be used from this to purchase supplies and equipment to assist with the program so we can buy the Soil and Water Office some things to help with the program, but also, we will not use as much as McGill did, so that will be more stream sites that we will be able to help with by doing it ourselves. There's no match required, it's 100% paid back, and honestly, it's not taken that long. When we started this with the federal grant, I know everybody was not sure, you know, how long it would take to get paid back and things like that. It's been, I'm not positive, but I'm pretty sure it's been within a few weeks usually. It's not been more than a month every time we've sent in a request. The applications are due February 23rd. Our Soil and Water Board has, has already approved our applying for this, but I wanted to bring it to you because it will be something that will need to go through the county, and it will be something that the county would be sponsoring. So we will not get $1,123,000. I have on here, we expect to hear back in May or June, and we'll bring back to the board at that time with how much they, they give us. We do expect to get some, and last time, they had a $500,000 cap on Realm One. There's not as much funds available, so I would say it'd probably be less than 500,000. I did write down before, I forgot to say, that we had asked for over 2 million last time, and we got 384,000. So that doesn't mean we, you know, doesn't mean we'll get 500,000 or, or even less than what we got this time, but basically, wanted to bring, bring that to you, show you our sites, and I'm not sure if you would want to approve the application, or if you just want to be aware of it, and then, you know, what do y'all feel? Okay. And if you have any questions.
If we don't need to, I don't.
Since it's not a set amount, yeah, I was gonna say, we don't know what we have yet.
And, and the fact that there's no county match, you know, there's no county, there's no county money, or, you know, county matching required, I don't, I don't see that we need to take any action.
I don't want to get it, I guess.
Yeah, and then, once we know more, we can.
Ms. Bowman, do you have any idea of the 28 sites, how many linear feet that is?
I could find out. I don't have it today, but we do have a spreadsheet that has all that in it, and that's just one of them I did not write down for today, but I can get that.
Well, y'all have done a good job. Those streams really look good.
Thank you.
I know when I was up there and looked at them, but after the storm, everything, I thought, holy cow, this is terrible.
Yeah.
So this is fantastic. And one question, on some of these streams, are they getting to where people could canoe down them or something like that? Are they that clear yet?
Well, the, some, some counties have taken long stretches of streaming, I know Catawba did that. We haven't done that as much because we had so much feedback, we had so many people that applied and came to us to start with, so we've got, we've got some stretches, but we've also got spots here and there, and also, we're helping more individual sites in this than long stretches, but that, that would definitely be something for future. I do see this continuing on as long as the state is funding it, I think it's something that we will be wanting to help with. And so, you know, doing longer stretches instead of individual landowners might be something we would consider. I would say in those, in those spots, definitely, where we have, where we have helped.
Well, because it may be one of those things where also, that if you're going to, you know, to do this, to clean these streams up as well as these are looking here, that could be the possibility of getting some type of recreational grant to clean the stream up that would help the individuals so that they could, you know, that people can do down through there. Just another thought of another way, just to maybe get some money to assist and make it where it'd be a lot cleaner for those areas that haven't been cleaned up yet.
Right.
Just a thought.
That's good.
Ms. Bowman, I don't know whether this is time to bring it up or not, but I know when they done part of ours, there was a, a lot of the timber that was in there was because of beaver damage. When the times right, would you bring it back to us about applying for the, the money to help eradicate some of these beavers, because there's quite a few farmers that's been calling? There's, there's a lot of, especially in the northern part of the county. There's a lot of timber because of the beavers.
Sure, that's something I was gonna say that we discussed with, with our Soil and Water Board, and I know that some of, some of these sites do have beaver dams on them, so the ones that are on there would be removed, but through the process with the wildlife agencies, yes, but, but definitely, if that's something that there's a need for in the county and something that the commissioners and, and our Soil and Water Board want to look into, we can do that. Or we, we have looked into it some, but if we wanted to proceed with it.
It's amazing what, I mean, it's amazing what a little beaver can do. Have you ever seen a beaver do? Anyway.
I love that bucky.
Commissions, any other questions or concerns, comments?
Sounds good. I'm glad we're getting them cleaned up. We'll be a little bit ahead of the game. Hopefully, no more rain, but it's probably coming, but we'll be ready.
Well, I was gonna say, the, and Commissioner Yoder mentioned that, you know, some of the sites, he looked at them after the big rain. We did hear from a few of our landowners on these longer stretches, you know, this last big rain a few weeks ago, that they, you know, really, really thought it helped, of course, and dipped back up into their fields, and we heard from some others that they're having flooding, of course, still, but, you know, hopefully it'll help to get their debris out too, but.
I hope it helped, but I'm gonna tell you, the last rain that we just had, there was a lot of places flooded.
Oh, yeah.
It was, it was, it was another one of those unbelievable rains, but I'm glad to see the streams getting opened up so that you can have that flow and doesn't have that sudden burst, you know?
All right. Thank you. Ms. Bowman.
Thank you.
Uh, moving right along, number nine, industrial park sewer system extension project bid recommendation. I would recognize County Manager Shane Fox. Scouts, we appreciate you being here, and we completely understand you taking this opportunity to excuse yourselves.
It's a good spot.
I don't want to hear about a sewer line project.
Thank you for coming, and like I say, we, yeah, I'd be right there with you.
I got you.
So, thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I've got a couple of projects here to give an update and recommend, recommend bids on. These two projects have been mentioned several times in the last few months during my closing statements during my reports as waiting on the bid process, and so the bids are in. We'll start with the industrial park sewer line project. This is something that has been brought to you a few times, from original application for the grant services, and then the advertisement for the bids. But this is 2,400 linear feet, eight-inch gravity sanitary sewer line. This is out at our Economic Development Site, Industrial Park Site, the 16 acres of property that was graded through mostly grant-funded about a year and a half or so ago. This is extending the sewer line out to that property from the lift station just down the road, so 2,400 linear feet total. Scope of the work is 270 days. We did RFQs for engineering. West Consultants was the chosen consultant or engineering firm for that portion of it. They then developed the scope and put out for bid the construction RFP, and Chad Sigmund Construction LLC was the winning bid, lowest bid for that project. The next slide is a map of the area that I'm referring to. So the bottom large portion that's red and lined is the pad site that I was speaking of earlier. You can see the proposed wastewater line that extends from just the west corner there down to the lift station, existing pump station, down WE BAB Industrial Drive. So again, 2,400 linear feet total of gravity sewer, eight-inch. The next slide will then go through the budget, so 365,727 was the low bid, and that again was Chad Sigmund Construction. Engineering contingency is 56,603, Western Piedmont Council of Governments and the environmental portions of that. That's the writing of the grant, administering of the grants, $30,000, for a total project cost of 452,330. That is proposed to be paid for by two grants. First, ARC, Appalachian Regional Commission, 50% of that's 226,165. The other 50% at 226,165 is a North Carolina Department of Environmental Equality grant. So again, this is not utilizing any general fund or tax money to provide this 2,400 linear feet of sewer out to the 16-acre pad site that we have. We believe by doing this, it obviously will provide more marketability for that product that's out there, and ultimately be another sewer user that will go on for the county. So be glad to answer any questions that you might have with this project.
It's not hard to, it's, it's much easier to appreciate projects that will improve the county's position that we don't have to spend county money on.
Right.
That's always a good thing. Gentlemen, we do need a vote, you know, we do need a vote on this. I would ask, I would ask for a motion to approve the industrial park sewer system expansion bid recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, I like the motion that we approve this grant as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Moving right on to number 10, Mr. Fox, if you'd remain there, to go over the Bethlehem Park Improvement Project Bid Recommendation.
Thank you, Chair. This is an exciting project. Again, we've talked about now for about two years. This is the Bethlehem Park Project. I'll provide some project history with a couple of slides here, and then we'll talk about the scope. Bethlehem Park dates back to the 1970s, so it's about a 50-plus-year-old park. We own 13 acres there approximately, and that was turned over to the county in 1978. So this has been under our purview now, again, for about 44, 45 years, I guess, 46 years this year. Last major update or addition was the shelter in the playground in the 1990s, and this park does have high usage, all of our park systems does. This one is no exception to that. A lot of folks use this park for recreational opportunities, whether it be soccer, baseball, tennis, or enjoying the playground and, and picnicking. Began discussions about two years ago to renovate this park, and the state appropriated monies in '23, the '23-'24 budgets, that really kicked this project off, knowing that the state appropriated $750,000 towards the overhaul of this project, or this park. Solicited engineering and design work first, and again, we advertised for bids in West Consultants, the same as the last project, was the winning engineering firm, and they began work on providing a scope of what the project was going to look like, the design overall. Then we went through the bid process during December and January, and Low Builders Incorporated on January the 16th submitted a low bid for this project. So that's a little bit of the park or project history. Going into the scope of the project, this is a very extensive scope. This is another 240-day project, so eight months, it's an extensive project. This is just a listing of the highlighted items here. This is a complete park overhaul. There will be no sections of this park that won't be touched. So this is new bathrooms, concession stands, with built-in picnic shelter, and I'll show some slides in a few moments of what that will look like. New playground, multiple play areas. Right now, we have one playground there, one unit with a little side unit. This is a larger playground that provides opportunities for all age groups. Eight new pickleball courts in place of two tennis courts. So there's four tennis courts there now. We're gonna resurface two of those and then turn two of those into eight permanent pickleball courts. That's the addition of basketball goals that'll create two half-court areas. Right now, we do not have basketball in that park, so this will create two areas that'll be half-court basketball areas. New lighting throughout, so right now, we have wooden poles and old lighting, and it's fairly expensive to operate those lights. So this is proposed. So this is proposed with still poles and LED lights. Converting the large baseball field to permanent soccer. Soccer is something that you all are aware of as a growing sport throughout, kinda like pickleball. And our large baseball field, we're proposing turning that into a permanent soccer field and allowing the smaller field to stay baseball. Drainage work throughout the project. This topography of the land that's at this park is difficult. A lot of hills, a lot of drainage work that needs to be done there. So there's gonna be some additional catch basins and ditch work that has to be put in to be able to stop some of the erosion that's taking place and to be able to shore up some of the, the banks and rotating walls that we have out there. New ADA sidewalks and entry throughout. This is not something that we have currently. Once you enter the park, it's difficult to traverse through the park. This is something that is much needed. So our ADA sidewalks and entry throughout, something that is gonna be a highly improved upon and sought after addition to this project. New softball, baseball batting cages, and then as you enter the park, new milling, we'll mill the pavement and pave the parking lot. Again, some more drainage work on the entry and the parking lot itself. So overall, again, this is just some of the highlighted areas of the project scope. But again, it's a very extensive scope overhaul, complete overhaul of the park project. The next slide is an overview of the area we're talking here. For those that may not know, this is a GIS taken image of the park and it shows, this was taken in 2022 or 2023, I guess. But you can go back through the years. There's not been a lot of work that's done on this park throughout the years, so it looks the same. But you'll see there, as you come in, that's the parking lot from the north coming to the south there on the west side that'll be re-milled and resurfaced. As you enter, everything from that point on is, is gonna be brand new, brand new sidewalks, entry. The shelter there that is, as you enter the park will be removed and that playground will be extended. And we'll look at a few pictures of the playground in just a few moments. And then the shelter itself or the concession stands and bathrooms will have a major overhaul. And again, I've got a few slides and if you want us to talk about some of the dimensions and some of the things that will add to it. So we can move on now and go into the restrooms, concession stands and playgrounds. And I'll provide some pictures and some highlights here of what we're looking at. So again, talking about the complete replacement of existing building that's there now. So that's an original building that was built, I guess, in the 70s. And so we're speaking of replacing that building, so tearing that one down, demolishing that one and building a new one back. Removing an existing shelter. Now it's separated. What we're proposing to put back, and again, you'll see a picture in a few moments, is one structure that'll have concession stands and bathrooms and the shelter all under one roof in two different areas for shelter. Current building that's there now is 36 feet by 24. New building's 96 by 30. So you can see the difference there, much larger building. Current restrooms have three total units, one unit for the female side, two on the male. This has six, three each. So we're doubling our overall restroom stalls. Again, current shelter has one area for eating. This new one will have two. And then we've got a new kitchen area and two new serving windows that'll be a part of that concession stand. So we can go on to the next slide, and this is a floor plan of what the building's gonna look like. It's kinda hard to see. We've got a picture in just a few moments of kinda what the rendering looks. But you can see on both sides, you'll see picnic tables. Those are under the shelter, so those are covered. The middle building is not only a concession stand, but bathroom and storage area as well. And so we do have both the male and the female bathrooms there, both with three stalls each. We have additional storage here, which is much needed to be able to provide access or storage for the concession stands and the equipment that's, that's currently housed there now and somewhat using an outside storage building. So we're gonna be able to move some of that stuff in. So this is the overall floor plan of what the building looks like. Next picture, next slide is rendering here of kinda what it looks like elevation. You can see the front and the back there. But I provided a picture on the next slide or a couple of pictures on the next slide of the existing building to show. Right now, it's a center block building, restrooms there on that bottom right, concessions on that top left. Again, nothing too, too fancy, just a standard block building that's provided great concessions and restroom capabilities for about 50 plus years. And then the next slide is an example of what we will be building. So the middle building will be larger. This is again, not for scale, just use for example. But it kinda shows the overall layout of what we're talking here with the building being in the middle. We'll have concession stands on the front, restrooms on the back, and then the picnic shelters will be on each end of that building. And again, that's about three times larger than what we have there now. So I'll pause just for a few moments before we go into the playground. Any questions so far on what we've discussed or the overall scope of the project?
I would just say, as a former 16-year-old manager of the Bethlehem concession stand, it does not hurt my feelings to see that building go away because it was rough when I was 16 years old, being honest. And yes, I was the concession stand manager for the Bethlehem Rec Department when I, as soon as I was old enough to drive. But I just, I would just say it's much needed.
Very much so, very much so. Moving on to the playground. So now there is an existing playground that, that's been there for about 30 plus years. The county installed it. What we're looking at is complete replacement of the existing playground. Again, current playground goes back to the 1990s. There's one area for play right now for all age groups. The new playground that we're proposing has two main areas, zero to five-year-olds and a five to 12-year-old. Swing features, slides, century areas, nature features. Again, we'll, I've got several slides to kinda show the outlay of the playground and some images there. Standalone swings, which are not there now. There's no swing sets. These are for zero to three and above. Balance features, chimes, features, century, global motions, rotating climbing climbers, cozy domes. These are all things you'll see in a few minutes, so I'm just throwing out the, the language itself. Proposed to have it installed and warranted by Carolina Parks and Play. That's at the 20-year warranty. So our proposal again is Carolina Parks and Play. That does provide a 20-year warranty to the playground. So moving on to actual pictures here, I think it'll help kinda put into perspective, this is the playground that we're proposing. On the left side, you'll see the larger side, the five to 12-year-old. On the right side, the smaller zero to five-year-olds. And in between, you see the swings and a lot of activities from balance beams to spinny global rides and a lot of century stations. So Carolina Parks and Play does a fantastic job providing hundreds of different activities within their playground. So can't remember the exact number, but 100-plus activities exist within this playground. So it's not just two or three or four different sets of things. There's many, many things within that. So as we go on to the next slide, get a little bit closer to look here at the larger five to 12. And you'll see there again, the balance beam, nature activities there to the right. You've got a leaf and some tree limbs that look like you can balance on. These are spring-based. Lot of century activity, chimes in the back left-hand corner there for some of the musical features. Next slide shows the other side. This is the smaller playground set. Again, each one of these has multiple slides. They've got climbing walls, et cetera. And then the next slide shows, again, swings not only there in the, in the background and the chimes, but also some different features in the front here. So overall, this playground is obviously something much more than what we have currently there. Overall project and, and the scope of the project, originally, we did not discuss a playground. We felt like as we were moving forward with this, that we would want to move forward with a complete overhaul of this playground. So here is a breakdown. So these are big numbers. These are the unfortunate times in which we're in, but good news at the bottom, not proposing a general fund tax dollars to be used for this. So start at the top and work our way down. Laill Builders Incorporated Construction. This is for the majority of the construction that'll take place, the building of the building, a lot of the grading work, drainage, parking lot, et cetera, 1.295. That was the low bid. We received three bids or four bids, I think, now, if I recall, and they were the low bid. Camp lighting or camp electric for sports lighting at 510, Carolina Parks and Play Playground at 280, engineering contingency at 270. A little higher contingency there because we do have a lot of area to cover. We'll make sure that we are covered and not have to come back to you guys and ask for more. So we're proposing a total project of 2.355 million. State appropriated monies of 750 and our Article 44 sales tax economic development. Again, that's restricted money that can only be used for a few things. Cannot be used for operations of the county. Can only be used for a few things, economic development and parks and recreation is considered economic development at 1.605 million. So that does net down to general fund tax dollars being used as proposed as of now at zero. So be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I mean, looking at the park and everything and everything's ADA accessible.
Absolutely.
Okay. Are there going to be anything there where if a family had a child that's in a wheelchair, that should be able to, the child could get in a swing so that
Yes.
People with disabilities? I think it's gonna be vitally important and because, well, my, my wife taught children with disabilities, me with special needs the whole time she's in school. And it taught me something. And I just wanna make sure there'd be things there for the kids who have special needs would have an opportunity to participate also.
Yeah, this, the, the park now is, is not as accessible as it should be. It's, like I said, it's an older park, built 50 plus years ago. This one will be fully accessible. So all areas of the park will be ADA accessible, including the playground and the features there as well. So we'll have more than enough opportunities for them to find different activities as well. So yeah, this is much improved on the ADA accessibility.
Thank you.
Certainly.
That, that park's needed an overhaul for a while.
Absolutely.
It really has. And I'm sure the folks will be tickled to death over the pickleball courts.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Sure.
Ms. Fox, this is a question. Is the, the playground company, is that who you were familiar with from your time in Blowing Rock?
It is. So there's a few playground companies that, that, that do this in the state. So when we went through this process, Carolina Parks and Play was the, the winning bidder. And that is who installed the Memorial Park Playground as well a few years ago. So the large playground there, if you've ever been in the middle of town, that's the same company that's done that. So in my opinion, they've got a great reputation. They provide a 20-year warranty. They do the installation, so this is turnkey. This is not something that we have to worry about handling eternally. It's not something we have to worry about, worrying about whether or not it's gonna uphold or be durable. My experience, personal experience of working with them is their products are durable. They're made to last. So, yes, sir.
Well, I, I just, you know, we have, or my family, you know, my wife and I, we've taken our children to downtown Blowing Rock specifically to the park. You know, at that time, didn't know you were the town manager, but, but I think a lot, you know, a lot of us, I'm sure, have been to downtown Blowing Rock and seen that, seen that, you know, the play facilities there. And I, for one, am very excited. You know, I, I still have children that are the age, you know, that are the age that would, that will enjoy the playground. I also have, you know, children that, that are recs, you know, recreation sports age. And not only that, but the addition of pick, you know, pickleball, which we, you know, we had, we had some folks meeting a couple, was it last month?
Last month.
I guess last month. You know, with the explosion of pickleball, I think this will allow Bethlehem Park to serve the entire, you know, the entire, not just Bethlehem community, but the entire area, the entire county, you know, from toddlers to, you know, how do you say?
Zero to 99.
Zero, well, I'll say zero to 120, yeah. Which I think's, you know, very important because
Absolutely.
parks are not strictly for baseball and softball anymore.
That's right.
So, and the soccer folks in the county will be very, very happy that at least this is one step toward improving, well, well, this is a step toward having a soccer facility, so. Well, one other thing I will mention, and this came up, Laill Builders Incorporated was also the contractor for Courthouse Park downtown Taylorsville. And at that time, I made sure to announce that I have no affiliation whatsoever with Laill Builders Incorporated. I have never, honestly, I've never met whomever the owners are. You know, I guess it's just a coincidence that we share a last name. But I just wanna make that publicly known that I have no, you know, no connection to them whatsoever. Gentlemen, we will need, or we have the opportunity to approve and/or disprove this recommenda, this recommendation.
Do I have a motion pertaining to the Bethlehem Park Improvements Project Bid Recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the recreation and park in Bethlehem.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion or questions? If not, we will vote. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Well, obviously not because it was unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, sir. Moving right along. I told my wife I didn't think open session would take very long tonight. I was wrong. Moving right along, number 10, Mr. Fox, Budget Amendments Number 15 and 16 and Project Budget Ordinance Number P1.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll start with number 15. So several different pieces to this, cooperative extension portion and library. Both of those are new monies that are coming in. So again, we're accounting for those new monies and expending those back out. The sheriff portion of this is a little bit different. So the sheriff panel, I believe, who was here in attendance, was able to find three vehicles. And again, most of you know, in the last few years, it's been difficult to find vehicles. So he was able to find vehicles at a really good price and we were able to move forward with purchasing those in the current year. We were able to purchase those and utilize the increase in our investment income that we have seen this year because of interest rates being higher. Negative on the borrowing side, but positive on the cash and investment return side. So we have had a significant increase overall with our investment income. So we utilized that increase to offset the cost of those three vehicles at $110,000. Again, this will be able, allow us to move forward in the current year with those vehicles since we know that we can obtain them. We will then subtract those from next year's capital. So you, we'll see that less next year. And then on the fire side, our fire training facility, which I'll give an update in a few moments. Got a few things there left to do. That's a net increase of $25,000. Any questions on number 15? Number 16 starts with the Bethlehem Park project, what we just spoke on just a few moments ago. So that is a top section there, the 1.605 million. The second piece of that is accounting for the overall cost of that and what that looks like with utilizing that Article 44 sales tax money. So again, be happy to answer any questions that you may have with that. And then the project ordinance is, we've been very fortunate this year and the past years to receive state appropriated monies. This year's though different. There's two pieces in which we're asking to, for approval tonight, project ordinance approval, $300,000, which is labeled community grants expenses. And then the second piece is our $750,000 for our Station One expansion of EMS building. Again, the 300,000, 750 is money coming from the state. So again, you'll have to approve that project ordinance and that allow us to draw that money down and to expend that money. That is not local money. That is money coming from the state through state appropriations. So be happy to answer any questions you might have on either 15, 16, or the project ordinance.
Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve Budget Amendments 15 and 16 and Project Budget Ordinance P-1.
Gentlemen, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving right along, number seven. Commissioners, we have had the consent agenda. Commissioners, we've had the opportunity, as provided in our information, to go over the information provided to us in our consent agenda. There is one item on that consent agenda that I was going to mention something about that actually Commissioner Reese talked about earlier. The North Carolina Rate Bureau has proposed homeowners in, has, have gone to the Commission of Insurance asking for rate increases on homeowners insurance across the state of North Carolina in varying amounts. There, these increases vary from kinda county to county, area to area. I've looked, I've looked at the map and, you know, there was a map that I saw. And just to let you know, I have, you know, being in real estate and construction for my, you know, my day job, I've gotten information from, from the National, from the North Carolina Association of Realtors. I've gotten information from the North Carolina Association of Home Builders, which I'm a member of both.
information from the North Carolina Association of Home Builders, which I'm a member of both. You know, asking folks to contact the, you know, the Commission of Insurance and, you know, beg for, beg for mercy almost. If I remember correctly, Alexander County, the, I'll say the Rate Bureau, and Ms. Jamie has it right here for me because I'm somewhat literate when it comes to my iPad and this little app that we use for trying to find things. But Alexander County, the North Carolina Rate Bureau has proposed a 41.3% or they're asking for, excuse me, 41.3% increase on homeowners insurance rates. And just my opinion, I'm, you know, Mr. Reese has talked to Commission of Insurance's office. And I, you know, and I'm very confident that these, you know, these requested increases would not happen at those amounts. But statewide, they vary from about 4% to 99.4% at the coast. So we felt like we should, you know, we should do essentially a resolution, just, you know, saying, hey, Alexander County Board of Commissioners, we ask that you, you know, we ask that you consider the folks in our county and the folks around the state and be as kind as you, as you can possibly be when it comes to homeowners insurance rate increases. So, you know, and then like I say, it may not be required that we do that. Do we have one prepared? I'll say, yeah, I'll say, because I've seen it. We do have a resolution prepared. Why is yours so much easier to use than mine?
Because I know what to do.
Oh, sorry about that.
I was just messing.
Yeah, no, I know. We would all be lost without Ms. Jamie. And I think we would all admit that. Like I say, this is just part of our, you know, part of the consent agenda. If you'll appease me, I will read it to you. It says, "Resolution opposing the homeowners insurance rate increase requested by the North Carolina Rate Bureau. Whereas the North Carolina Rate Bureau, a non-governmental entity created by the North Carolina General Assembly to represent companies that write insurance policies, has filed for double-digit insurance rate increases with the North Carolina Department of Insurance. And whereas the requested rate increases range from 4.3% to 99.4%, with an average increase of 42.2% statewide, would become effective August 1st, 2024 unless denied by the North Carolina Commissioner Mike Causey. And whereas homeowners with coverage through the North Carolina Insurance Underwriting Association would also be subjected to an additional 15% surcharge. And whereas the proposed rate increase for Alexander County homeowners is 41.3%. And whereas the insurance carriers are admittedly discontinuing coverage in certain areas of the state to limit coverage, decreasing available options for homeowners in securing coverage. And whereas homeowners will be priced out of the market or penalized by being forced to raise their deductibles to offset these new astronomical premiums. Now therefore be it resolved that Alexander County Board of Commissioners oppose the excessive rate increase for homeowners insurance and request that Mike Causey, North Carolina Insurance Commissioner, deny any rate increase, rate increase for 2024. Adopted this 5th day of February 2024, signed by myself and attested by Ms. Jamie Starnes, clerk to the board." So I just wanted to let you guys know that we are doing that. And like I say, hopefully it wouldn't, may not be necessary, but we just want to make sure that we do what we feel is best for our folks. We haven't, no, we haven't had much yet. Gentlemen, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as given.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion? If not, all in favor, approval, please raise your right hand. Thank you very much. Moving on to number eight, County Manager's Report. County Manager Shane Fox.
Thank you again. I'll give you a few updates on some things we've talked about again for the last few months. On January the 10th, had a chance to go through the walkthrough at the Wittenberg Beach Access. Again, that was with Duke. So we were able to walk through staff, county staff were able to walk through and provide back to Duke a punch list of items which the majority have been accomplished so far, or thus to date. We are still planning on opening that Memorial Day weekend, so that's coming up here in just a few months. But again, that's the Wittenberg Beach Access in Bethlehem. So we're excited about opening that on Memorial Day. Pickleball group update. We did meet with the pickleball group after the meeting last month and spoke to them about some possibilities. Right now, we are discussing potentially utilizing J.C. Park. The tennis courts there have not been utilized in a number of years. Potentially turning those into temporary pickleball courts as we wait on others in the county to become a reality like Bethlehem. So just wanted to provide an update since they were here last month. And several of them, I think, have moved back for a few months to Florida as they embrace the warmth. Ballpark bids, something that we've, again, talked about for a number of years. We had our original bid opening schedule for January the 30th. We only received two bids. So we reissued that for 14 days. So we're now planning on opening those bids on the 13th of February. So that is next week. Since it's the second time, whatever we receive, we can open. So only to receive the first time. That's why we couldn't open those. Again, had to move forward with a second advertisement, and that's to end on the 13th. So that'll be on the March meeting. I'll be able to bring something to you for consideration then. CBG Sterling Road Project, again, has been talked about for quite some time. We're currently soliciting bids for the engineering firms and engineering services of the scope of that project. So that is set to be delivered back on February the 29th. So again, plan on the March meeting, hearing an update on what those bids look like for the Sterling Road Project. That is not a construction bid. That's soliciting bids for engineering services to provide the scope, to provide opportunities to bid for construction services. And then I mentioned our fire training facility earlier. Inside welding is taking place this week. Footers will be poured hopefully later this week, early next week for the outside stairwell. And then we'll have gravel that'll be put down and painting of that structure and that project will be complete. Those are the updates I had for tonight. Be glad to answer any questions you might have on any of these projects or any of these updates or anything you may have county-related.
Thanks, sir. Gentlemen?
Good.
I think I board them. Ms. Fox, thank you very much. We will now move into closed session per North Carolina General Statute 143-318 dot 11A, 4, 5, and 6 for discussion of economic development, contractual, and personnel issues. We will reconvene for adjournment purposes only. Thanks for being here. And if we don't see you before next month, we hope to see you back next month. Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I'm good at this. This is my, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So I move, make a motion we go in closed session.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your right hand. We are now in closed session. Thank you very much.